Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for the Naperville City Council. This event is being recorded. I am Susan Craighead, President of the League of Women Voters of Naperville. The League is a nonpartisan organization. We do not support or oppose candidates for public office. You can rely on the League to present fair and civil candidate forums where each candidate is allowed an equal chance to respond. Local elections typically have a much lower voter turnout than presidential or midterm elections. Yet it is the local elections that have real consequences in our day to day life. In many ways, our local officials have the most impact on our city and on our quality of life. I hope that your attendance here tonight means that you are making your plan for how you will cast your vote on or before April 4th. In addition to watching candidate forums live or recorded, you may also find candidate forum on vote411.org, our nonpartisan online voter guide. All candidates have been invited to respond to questions and their answers appear complete and unedited. Vote 411 is expected to be logged by Friday, the 24th, and a video of this candidate forum will be linked. And now let me introduce our moderator for tonight, Jan Dörner.
Thank you, Susan. Welcome to the candidate forum put on by the League of Women Voters of Naperville. My name is Jan Dörner and I am from the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League's purpose is to promote political responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Providing this forum allows citizens to become better informed about the issues facing their community and to come better and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are happy to provide this service for the community. The League of Women Voters is not responsible for verifying the accuracy of the statements the candidates make in this forum. This forum is for those seeking to be members of the City Council of Naperville. Four seats in the City Council are up for election. The term is four years for each council position. The candidates have agreed to abide by the rules set forth prior to this forum. The purpose of a candidate forum is to allow voters an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues and stimulate public interest in the race. As this is a forum and not a debate, candidates must address the moderator, not each other. The moderator will enforce League rules. Each candidate will present a one-minute introductory statement, the order determined alphabetically listed by last name. Then League and community-generated questions will be asked, and each candidate will have one minute to respond in alternating order. Closing statements in continuing alpha rotation will be one minute. A timer screen with periodic countdown will be visible to the candidates and moderator throughout the forum. Candidates will strictly adhere to the time limits. When you see the stop sign, you may finish your sentence. Candidates, please unmute and start your videos. Our City Council candidates here tonight are Magna Ban Sal, Patrick Kelly, Alison Longenbauer, Rebecca Malatki Meslin, Ashley South, Ashfaq Sayad, Jody Trendler, Madhu Upal, and the following candidates were invited but did not attend. Nag Jaswell, Josh McBroom, Nathan Nate Wilson. So let's start with candidate Ban Sal. Your opening statement, you have one minute.
Good evening. Naperville is my home for 18 years. I have built my business and raised my family and have been involved in the community. Currently, I serve as the elected trustee for the Wheatland Township and White Eagle HOA. I have an MBA, serve as a finance executive for the Global Technology Company. I'm also woman chair and a lead volunteer for Indian Community Outreach who has been instrumental in bringing India Day Program programs. I am intellectually honest with the approach to the issues and I believe decisions we make today will significantly impact the neighborhood of Naperville for generations to come. With my strong business and finance background, 20 years of experience, as elected official experience and having raised my family and business in Naperville, not only motivates me, but also makes me the best candidate for the job and I am ready to serve the day one for this candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly, your one-minute opening statement.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight and for helping to remind our community to vote in this important upcoming local election. My name is Patrick Kelly and I'm the one incumbent City Council member running this field of 11 candidates. I first ran for City Council four years ago to really bring a slightly different perspective as someone with a young family and as someone who want to bring more of a resident-based focus to our council. I think I've been successful in both of those areas over the past four years. I've spent a very significant amount of time meeting with residents in particular from all parts of our city, large part about proposed developments, where I've been proud to help broker many compromises that I think have led to a healthy, reasonable compromises that have benefited both residents and developers. I've also helped make significant progress in important areas, including sustainability, affordable housing, and modernizing our city's infrastructure, which is really critical right now. I'm proud of what our city has accomplished over the past few years, including being named the safest city in America for our size and reducing our tax rate to the lowest it's been in 50 years. And I hope to have the opportunity to continue serving on our council for the next four years. Thank you.
Candidate Longenbauer, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Hi, I am Alison Longenbauer, running for Naperville City Council. Of course, thank you so much for hosting us and thanks to the other candidates for showing up tonight. I have lived in Naperville for 18 years. I am a vice president with JP Morgan and have been with them for 30. I am fully engaged in Naperville City Council. I have attended every meeting since 2019. I'm a library trustee. I graduated from both the Citizens Police and Fire Academies and I'm endorsed by the Naperville Professional Fire Fires because of my dedication to public safety. I value good governance and respect between council members and residents. I would be a responsible steward of our tax dollars, strike a balance between residential and commercial development, and focus on shared experiences that make Naperville attractive to visitors and new residents. I am tireless and dedicated to Naperville's success and would hit the ground running on day one if elected. Again, I'm Alison Longenbauer and I am Alison for Naperville on my website and social media. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Malatki Meslin, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Hello and thank you for having us. My name is Rebecca Malatki Meslin and I'm running for Naperville City Council. When my husband and I moved here 11 years ago, I was seven months pregnant and I had a two-and-a-half-year-old and we didn't know anyone. But we found an incredibly warm and welcoming community that has become our family and that's why I'm running for Naperville City Council. I want to make sure that every family that lives in Naperville feels seen, heard, and valued. I intend to do that by supporting diversity and inclusion in so many different ways, but especially on our city services such as our city boards and commissions, and finding ways to make sure that our residents are civically engaged at every level. I also want to make sure we have a citywide strategic plan that we can use to implement more effective affordable housing measures as well as capital improvements. I want us to continue to be a leader among communities and I bring a wealth of experience working for municipalities as well as nonprofit organizations to the City Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate South, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Ashley South. I'm running for Naperville City Council. I'm running for a thriving Naperville in our local businesses, neighborhoods, and city services. I worked in the financial industry for 15 years. I was managing Zell for JP Morgan and I worked at Northern Trust. I earned and maintained my Certified Treasury Professional designation, which certifies me to run large programs. I shifted my focus from Wall Street to Main Street when I founded a community magazine. I plan on achieving my goals by leveling the playing field for small businesses and focusing on business development in both North and South Naperville. By supporting affordable housing for seniors and returning college students and by getting the city to commit to going green in our mission statement. I have all the skills needed to be successful, strong financial background to examine and review the budget, small business owner to focus on small businesses, other small businesses, and live the passion for my community every day in my job as I listen and connect with residents. Vote for me, Ashley South, for thriving Naperville.
Thank you. Candidate Sayad, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you so much for hosting us today. Good evening. My name is Ashfaq Sayad and I'm running for Naperville City Council. I'm an active resident of Naperville and passionate about making a difference in the city. One of our shared values is recognizing the need for diverse perspective at all levels of decision-making. If I am elected by the people of Naperville, our city will be closer to reflecting the rich culture and diversity of our city. My passion for Naperville goes beyond social engagement into real impact as reflected by the various boards and commissions that I am committed to. I'm a trustee of the Naperville Public Library, a board member for Los and Fishes, Naperville Neighbors United Diversity Advisory Board for the Daily Herald, and I'm also a graduate of Naperville Citizen Police and Fire Academy. Along with this, I served as committee member for Youth 360 Youth Services. I was the co-chair for 2020 US Census Naperville Complete Count Committee to create innovative strategy for a widespread outreach campaign that was incredibly successful despite the challenges. Naperville was recognized as number one city.
Thank you, candidate Sayad. Candidate Trendler, you have one minute for your opening.
Good evening. So I am Jody Trendler and I'm running for City Council because I have the experience and a proven track record of serving our community in various capacities for the past 15 years that have given me a deep understanding for how our city works. 2007, I've worked with city councils, city staff, school districts, park district, chamber of commerce, local businesses, and I've even started a nonprofit organization to help build community resilience for us as well as others. You may know me from my latest endeavor of initiating the Naperville Environment and Sustainability Task Force, which now serves as the official advising entity for City Council on sustainability. And I'm running for council because Naperville's been my home for 27 years and I want to make sure that we stay one of the safest and best places in the country to live by being the leader and actually championing systemic city planning and economic development.
Thank you. Candidate Upal, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Good evening and thank you for hosting this forum. My name is Madhu Upal. I have been a resident of the city for over 30 years, raised our three daughters here. I taught in this district. I was a science teacher at Lincoln Junior High. And later I had the honor of serving on the Naperville Library Board of Trustees for six years, two years as its president. And I've come to see that our city does have some challenges. The challenges are, we look at our safety, but we also see that we need civility in our public discourse. So I am focused on that. I'm also, I want to be sure our city remains a fiscally vibrant city, but also keeping sustainability in mind. And I believe in also looking at services for our seniors and others. And as a nonpartisan candidate, I think I have an understanding of the needs of the city that I can serve because I have the qualities like integrity, experience, analytical skills, and others to serve the people of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly, you will be the first to answer the first question tonight. What are the top three things voters should know about you which uniquely qualify you for this position?
So I think very generally, I would say the thing that qualifies me for the position is that I've been doing it for the past four years. That would be the overarching. How we mentioned earlier, I'm the one incumbent running for one of the four spots out of 11. I think I've done a good job. I have done what I said I was going to do. I've met with residents pretty much constantly since I took the job. I try to have outreach all the time with good factual information. I guess specifically is that one for three parts. One, I'll say I meet with residents, as I said I was going to do. Secondly, how I say the factual information, I think is really critical. Making sure that that good, true facts come out from city staff and from city council members. I have a Facebook page where I keep running updates on city issues and our city council meetings and I try to keep it very straight to the point so that people know what's happening in our city government. And third, I'll commit to continue doing that for the next four years.
Thank you. Candidate Longenbauer, the same question.
Well, I mean, I said a lot of it in my intro. First thing, I've been to every meeting since 2019. I've been going to the meetings since 2016 because of the Fifth Avenue train station development and I got hooked on those meetings and I kept going. For the last four years, I've been providing summaries and live commentary on my Facebook page of all of the meetings. Second, my corporate experience. I have 30 years of corporate experience, working with teams, process improvements, working to solve problems. And I think that corporate experience would lend itself well to the city of Naperville. I mean, it's like a big company. You know, like mine is, we've got 1,000 employees, we have 150,000 stakeholders, and that's very similar to the corporate world. And then finally, I'm tireless. I mean, I do my homework. I research all the agenda items. I would make, you know, informed decisions involving all of the stakeholders. So those are my three.
Thank you. Candidate Malatki Meslin, your top three things voters should know about you that qualify you for this position?
I think one of the things that makes me the most unique is that I'm the only candidate running that has actually worked for a municipality. I worked for a Department of Public Works for eight years. I have intimate knowledge of what it looks like from the other side of the dais, being a representative of an actual city employee. I also have strong experience in mission-based organizations. As I mentioned, I've worked for nonprofits, including serving as a school administrator. And we are a mission-driven organization as a city, understanding that our mission drives all of our decision-making, our strategic planning, and our fiscal decisions is crucial to be on City Council. And last but not least, I have a strong track record of community building. I am somebody who seeks to go out into the community, find folks, and make sure that I'm connecting with them individually as well as with the organizations that represent them so that they may have a voice heard on City Council. That is really the definition of inclusivity and belonging. And I have strong experience professionally and personally being a community builder.
Thank you. Candidate South, same question.
Hi. So as mentioned, I have an extensive finance background. I am able to bring policy to bear with projects and policy. And I think that because of that Certified Treasury Professional designation, again, I've got the skills to examine the budget and really review with that lens. I have a passion for community. I started a community magazine, having left JP Morgan. I'm an active listener in that role. And I also served as a mentor for high school girls for nearly a decade and served on their board. So I've got that lens as well. I will do the work. I left home at 17, worked full-time, put myself through the College of DuPage, ultimately transferring to Columbia University where I earned my degree in political science. So finance background, passion for community, and hard worker. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sayad, same question.
So I have a passion for community service and for many years I've been helping, supporting a lot of nonprofit organization in city. And I was the vice chair of Sensex 2020, where me and Mr. Mark Rice, the chair of Sensex 2020, we put together a plan for Naperville City where we can have the maximum self-responsers. And we worked very hard for more than one year for the city and for the Naperville community. So that is my passion, which I am continuing without holding any title, without holding any position, and will continue. And because of that, we are getting $360 million to Naperville for next 10 years. So that is a greatest achievement. I can say that because of us. I'm not taking the full credit, but we were the part, we were driving that project. Apart from that, I'm on the board of Naperville Public Library and serve there and engage community leaders, engage people, and get people together. I'm on the board of Los and Fishes and do the same work. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Trendler.
As I mentioned in my intro, so I do have 15 years of experience working within our city with city leadership, with city staff, and our community organizations and entities, actually working to improve our community. So pretty much anything sustainability-related, I've had my finger in. I know how the sausage is made. I know what it takes to get things done. And I also have a passion for sustainable community development. This is my education, my passion. I've been doing it for 10 years. It's what my nonprofit is founded on. And it's complicated and it's what I spend all of my time, eat, sleep, and breathing doing. But I'm also very pragmatic. So as proven by my leadership through the Naperville Environment and Sustainability Task Force, it was all research-driven, data-based, and moving forward, making decisions based on data, not hyperbole. So.
Thank you. Candidate Upal.
Thank you. I know I have the knowledge. I understand the heart and soul of the city. Working as a teacher, I work very closely with over 2,000 students, parents, and teachers. And I believe that the understanding I have of the city is going to make me an excellent councilwoman. I also believe that being a nonpartisan person, I have friends in both parties or three parties or four parties, and I know how to work with people, work with people of diverse backgrounds, whether you're rich, who are educated, not so educated. And I've been able to bring people together to work toward a common cause. And I believe in balance. I'm the kind of person who is, as people have used the word before, pragmatist. I know that we need to balance our financial interests against our sustainability needs. So I know how to do that. So I believe that I'll serve the city of Naperville as an excellent councilwoman. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ban Sal. You need to unmute.
Hi, I'm already elected official. I am elected trustee for the Wheatland Township. I am a co-chair for the Senior Committee of the Township as well. I am elected official, elected member for the White Eagle Homeowner Association Board for several years. I'm a woman chair and lead volunteer for the Indian Community Outreach and I have been volunteering for nonprofit organizations for several years. I can, I am ready. I can serve from day one with my strong financial background and working in a global technology company for 20 plus years. And I can bring the diverse perspective and the minorities on the dice. That's one of my biggest qualities. These are the qualities I will bring to the dice. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Longenbauer, you will be the first to answer this next question. One of the services Naperville provides to its residents is electric power, which comes primarily from burning coal. Do you support extending the contract with Naperville's electricity provider, the Illinois Municipal Electric Agency? Why or why not?
No, I do not. I mean, we have, it expires in 2035, but it does have a five-year cancellation plan. So this council will have to discuss it. It's not something that we can kick the can down the road any longer. And it's going to take some political courage to do this. It's going to take a lot of research to see what we can do to start having IMEA when the tranches expire to move towards sustainable energy. And that's what we need to do. And then we're going to need to decide what happens in 2035. I personally think we should get out of the contract. But we'll work with our partners within city staff because they are the experts and they're going to be able to weigh that relationship with IMEA to see what the best decision is. So that's my position now. We would need to see all of the data to make the final decision, though.
Thank you. Candidate Malatki Meslin, your position on this?
I do not support renewing the contract with IMEA. I believe that there are alternatives that we need to explore. We have a little bit of time. Although the contract expires in 2035, as Alison mentioned, they do want us to renew that in the next few years. And so looking for opportunities to collaborate with city staff, with community organizations who are also doing this work, and also collaborate with the other cities that are receiving their services from the same coal-burning plants in order to leverage hopefully what is our position to find more renewable resources that we can use to supply our residents with their power, not just while we're on City Council, but well into the future to leave a better legacy for not just, again, our residents, but those who are living near that coal power plant downstream from us.
Thank you. Candidate South.
Okay, so I do not support extending the contract. In fact, we have two contracts. The first one is about our use of energy and buying into it. We're part of a 32-group. They want us to renew because we're one of the largest users. But again, we have a lot of power. So I think that we need to wield that power. We also own, as a second part, 15% of that coal plant. And we need to dig into what that means by untangling how it is that we use it in addition to that partial ownership. As I mentioned, I am committed to going green by adding that to our mission statement and providing that lens for every piece of business that comes before City Council. I have a three-year-old. I care about what the city looks like and I'm committed to sustainability, including understanding how it is that we can get out of a coal-powered contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sayad, you have one minute to answer this question.
Okay, so I do not support. And I have learned about this recently, in last like two years, where, you know, we should not be renewing our contract with IMEA. Second thing is we have experts and I got connected with NEST, which is a good organization who are working closely with Naperville City. And we can take an expert advice and then at city level, we can review and take decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Trendler, same question.
I certainly do not support continuing our contract with the way that it is. In fact, this was one of the issues that started my endeavor and this sustainability issue with our city in the first place 15 years ago when I lobbied against getting into this contract in the first place. So 15 years later, I'm still fighting it and it is absolutely one of my priorities. And it ties into my other campaign platform issue of wanting to address transparency, which is one of the big issues that we have around this and trying to decide how we are going to manage currently becoming owners of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars into a coal facility the way IMEA is currently structured, as well as transitioning our energy, our energy purchasing from dirty energy into clean renewable energy. So this is absolutely one of my priorities that I will be pushing forward as soon as I get elected.
Thank you. Candidate Upal.
Yes, and I want to start by prefacing my statement by saying one of the things we love about our cities are reliable services. Having electricity in our home without any or almost no interruption is a great boon. So certainly, by looking at that contract and looking at how dirty that electricity production is, I'm not in favor of renewing the contract, but I'm also not in favor of saying, you know, let's do something to get out of it. I believe that there are new technologies coming forth all the time. As reading Chicago Tribune, there are many nuclear power plants that are actually universities are testing. So I just feel that we do not need to rush into anything because we still have time. We need to look at emerging technologies and see what are some of our choices. So as we get closer to deciding, having our city investigate other options for energy and see what is the best way to meet our electricity needs in a reliable manner. Thank you.
Candidate Ban Sal. You need to unmute.
Yeah. 2035 is still a long time and the city of Naperville would like to work more on extending the contract. Balancing is what we needed. uh, would like to work more on extending the contract. Uh, balancing is what we needed. We have sixty-one thousand five hundred users of the electricity. Uh, city of Naperville has its own electricity purchase. That is uh, the best thing, uh, the city has. And we need constant supply of energy, uh, especially the Chicago-like weather. Uh, green energy is absolutely wonderful thing, uh, with a green environment, but shifting from coal to, uh, clean energy will uh, not be the complete solution as we need, uh, the solar panels and the windmills are, they are not completely justified to bring the constant energy as we needed. So I would like to look into, uh, this matter more before making any decisions rather saying yes or no are, um, supporting or not supporting at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, so this is one of my core issues. It's one reason I ran four years ago. Uh, so my background is I'm an attorney. I started in, uh, working as an environmental attorney. That's why I went to law school. I got a certificate in environmental and natural resources and energy law. Um, so it's something that's near and dear to my heart. I, when I learned about this five or six years ago, I thought it was terrible that we're ninety percent plus coal as a source of our energy and wanted to find a way to, to make a change. One concern I've got with I M B A is for the last four years, we've been telling them that we want to make a change and, and asking them to do better. And they haven't really shown us a whole lot, in my opinion. Uh, uh, we've only notched up a tiny little bit in the last four years. Uh, if they keep up that pace, I would say we should not renew. Uh, I do think all options should be on the table. The city is actually in the process right now of hiring a consultant, uh, to bring us what our options would look like. We don't want to ditch I M E A in favor of something else that would be just as dirty. So we want to make sure we find a good, clean source of energy moving forward and do it in a thoughtful way. And I hope we will get there.
Thank you. Candidate Malaki Meslin, you will be first to answer question number three, which is, do you support the assault weapons sales ban ordinance as passed in twenty twenty-two? Why or why not?
Absolutely. Um, firearms are the number one cause of death in children. Uh, this statistic, uh, is something that we can't ignore. And while Naperville has recently been ranked the number one safest city, uh, over a hundred thousand people, um, that doesn't mean we're immune to staggering statistics around gun violence. And this was a small way that we could stand up for our values as a city and say that we can make change. We don't have to wait for the state or for national government to pass laws, policies, ordinances. Uh, we can say that we as a community value the lives of our children. We value the lives of our residents and we will take measures to protect them. And this was, um, I, I fully supported the hard work, uh, and the you know, desire for our city council members who passed this ordinance to try to find consensus on such a divisive issue.
Thank you. Candidate South.
Okay, so this was passed in August twenty-two, strong vote, eight to one. Uh, as I understand it, language was being crafted after the Uvalde shooting. Um, and then with two weeks later from the Highland Park shooting. Many of us new folks that were impacted by that, if not directly, had a friend who felt that impact. Again, we've got to do better as a city. I think that we can be a leader in that. And in fact, a federal judge just backed us up where they stopped the restraining order against the, uh, ordinance. So we've got that backing that specifically said, and I quote, at the end of the day, we have to do what's right because assault weapons are particularly dangerous. High-capacity magazines are particularly dangerous. The regulation accords with history and tradition. Naperville and Illinois lawfully exercise their authority to control the position, the possession, transfer and sale. I support the ban, um, and I think Naperville is saying, not in our city. Again, I have a three-year-old and I don't want to hear that over the P A that the one of his schools was impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Sayin.
I support the ban and I was one of the person who was there at city hall at the meeting. And I heard the community members coming and speaking there, sharing their thoughts, their consensus, their issues, the safety. And one of the top priority for me is community safety in my this election. And I feel yes, we, we took a great, strong decision, very uh, powerful decision, I can say, or courageous decision. We have taken it and I was very happy to see that decision. And I saw the smile on the people's faces there, our communities faces there. They were so happy to have this thing. So I support definitely.
Thank you. Candidate Trendler.
Yes, I fully support the efforts of our current council members for passing that ordinance. Um, again, it does, just to reiterate, it does absolutely send the message that we value safety in our community. Um, it was very similar to the issue we had with the, um, puppy mill puppies. We are sending the message that we value our human safety in our community. And as a, uh, uh, yeah, I fully support and command the efforts of our current council for passing that. It does not solve the issue of violence, but it does reduce even this remotest remote of statistical probability of it happening in our community. I think it's worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Upo.
I too absolutely support the ordinance that banned the sale of, uh, assault weapons in Naperville. And I applaud the city council for having done that. Because these weapons have absolutely no place in us, um, in a civilized community. And I, I think these weapons are a threat to the safety and well-being of our communities, to our children, to our adults, to our police. Because when a policeman is faced with somebody holding an assault weapon, uh, you know, I, I know that the result is not going to be very good. Our children and communities are living in fear and that's not how we should be living. We want it to be a happy and safe city. And I think we need to do more to make our communities safer than they are. Um, I believe assault weapon ban is, uh, really just the first step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bonsal. Unmute please.
One of my priorities are public safety, uh, overall well-being and the mental health of the, of our residents. That's, and the fiscal responsibility is my another priority. I would leave this issue to be dealt with more at the federal level and state level. Any local ordinances to the city level will thus resulting in a lawsuits to our, um, city council and, and those money will be used on, on the heavy taxpayers, which I'm, uh, not agreed to pay more taxes on those lawsuits. And that money can be used for our safety and welfare of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, yes, so this, this was an issue that was, uh, so important to me. I helped lead the way to get this drafted and passed, uh, for our city. Uh, I think a lot of people around the country have had different breaking points on, on different shootings that we've seen over and over, over the years. Whether it's Sandy Hook, um, for me, it was Uvalde, uh, is where I just felt like as an elected official, I almost had an obligation to try to do something to help the problem. Um, and that's when we started working on it, uh, and, and yes, shortly after that, uh, the issue happened in Highland Park, uh, on Fourth of July. And just kept giving us more motivation. My frustration was at the federal and state level. We just have not seen action for years. And I felt like we had to do something, um, to show other governments that there was a path to get this done. Uh, it was mentioned an eight-to-one vote. We have a, a diverse council. We came together to get this done. The state then shortly followed us and passed a statewide ban, which was really part of our goal was to show other governmental bodies that it could be done. And it, we've had success there. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lon, uh, Long and Bow.
Yes, I absolutely supported the, um, the ordinance. Um, I mean, I'm not naive enough to think that it is going to solve all gun violence problems, but it was definitely a, a step in the right direction. And I was really proud that our council stepped up and showed their leadership, not just to the town, but to all of Illinois, because when Naperville leaves, others follow. Um, and we are again, named one of the safest cities in the country. And I think that's, that's wonderful. Um, we have an excellent police force. Um, we have council members who vote for budget that gives our police the, the resources that they need. And there's really nothing in this ordinance that infringes on anybody's second amendment rights. I mean, you can still buy a gun at one of the Naperville gun stores, just not one of these that should only be in the hands of active law enforcement or the military. So I love that our council said not on our watch and they had the courage to come to do, to come together to do the right thing.
Thank you. Uh, candidate South, you will be the first to answer question number four. What further efforts would you support, if any, to address affordable housing in Naperville?
Okay, so this is another one of my platform items. We need affordable housing for our seniors, returning college students and anyone who wants to live in our great city. Uh, we've got some recommendations within the strategic plan about our voluntary ordinances, different, um, loan programs and leveraging publicly owned land. Uh, we've got a new development that was passed at, uh, one oh third and fifty-nine, which I think is a great step in the right direction. However, we have essentially limited out to our borders, right? We don't have a lot of more available land left. So we've got to look into redeveloping. I am a strong proponent of redeveloping things like the Fifth Avenue Station or any of the vacant buildings that we have today uh, for affordable housing. I think we can also look at our ordinances. Right now, fifty percent of new residential developments have to be brick um, or stone. So internally focused on that, look at what we have existing and also leverage the Department of Aging uh, that the state of Illinois has. Thank you.
Candidate Sayad.
Thank you, Jen. So affordable housing, workforce housing is one of the top priority for me. And I've been meeting a lot of school teachers, city staff, uh, police officials, fire officials, and I asked them, where do you live? So after my conversations, so they say, most of the people they see, they leave out of Naperville, you know? So I asked them, you know, why, why, what is the reason? So then the answer is affordable. So it is challenging to have a house in Naperville. So my thought process is that, yes, the people who have been working in Naperville, the people who have been serving our community, they should be living in Naperville. They should be working in Naperville. So my, my, I support, uh, affordable housing and how do we get this affordable housing? We need to get connected with the builders, construction people and have some, some type of incentives to some of our service people who have been serving in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Trendler.
And so this affordable housing is absolutely a perfect opportunity to be able to work on our integrated systemic planning issues, um, and it should be addressed in our upcoming strategic planning cycle. Um, our community is landlocked. And so this is where understanding how we're going to redevelop our community is going to come into play. Um, because we need a lot more, we do need more affordable housing. We need places where seniors can downsize and not have to spend more money than the current home that they live in currently. Um, and by integrating and putting in mixed-use development, those are prime ways of integrating this type of affordable housing for our seniors, for our workforce. Um, so that we can have a more diverse, uh, community uh, that is affordable and approachable for more people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Upo.
Uh, yes, I, I definitely agree that we need to do more to provide affordable homes and not housing, not just to seniors, but also younger families. Because, uh, as we know, our, when the cost of rent alone in the city is about sixteen hundred dollars a month, many families cannot afford it. Uh, the Illinois Housing Development Authority informed Naperville in twenty eighteen that only about seven point five percent of its housing met the criteria for affordable housing, while it should be about ten percent. And in recognizing that in its, um, and I'm going to just read what I have written, so I don't mess it up. Um, that, uh, the city in its, uh, twenty twenty-three plan said that we need to develop a plan for naturally occurring affordable housing. Now, I fully support, there was an, um, affordable, uh, HIP program, AHIP program that was approved by the city council on January seventeenth, because it recognizes the need for, uh, incentives to encourage more affordable housing in our community. Repurposing buildings, um, we, um, what, what are called as, um, A, A U, A U Ds, I think, auxiliary units development, and I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Bonsal.
Well, uh, Naperville is a vibrant city and it is welcoming for all the, um, age groups, seniors, teens, um, and youth. So they, and everyone deserves to be a home and house on its own. So yes, I am in favor of affordable housing, uh, and, uh, while recently Naperville has been ranked third most affordable safe city in America. More work needs to be done in this area, I believe. Uh, as we work overall plan, we need to focus on our seniors as a growing population of seniors has grown up in the city and the youth as well. As a growing population, we must, uh, work on building, uh, more housing for them. Uh, as we, as the housing is available and making more affordable for the youth, this needs to be done in a more planned and a structured way. I can be in the consideration with the views and thoughts of current residents and, uh, without amending or changing the city's master plan and the fabrication of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kelly.
Thank you. I'll talk a little bit about what we've done. Um, so it was a, a big point of discussion four years ago when I ran because that report had just come out from the state that we were only seven and a half percent, where the minimum is ten. And my frustration was that there had been a lot of discussion about it, but not much action. Uh, so I've tried and worked really hard over the past four years to sit down with developers, encourage them to include affordable units in their developments. And we've had some major successes over the past few years. Uh, it's hard to move the needle on those percentages when you're talking about forty thousand plus, uh, housing units already in the city. But we've had major successes, including the Vantage, uh, Affordable Apartments on Ogden Avenue that replaced the old Ramada Inn. That was an eyesore. Now it's a nice, beautiful building that provides affordable housing. We convinced the developer at City Gate West to include, uh, some affordable units. And the project at one hundred and third and fifty-nine for I D D and senior affordable is a huge win. Moving forward, we do want to get this ordinance over the finish line that will help provide a stable a way that developers can look to, um, and have assurances what they will receive in return for providing affordable housing.
Thank you. Candidate Long and Bow.
All right. So first of all, we need to define what affordable means. And it doesn't mean rezoning R one and R two to high density and nor does it mean low income. Um, I do support the efforts in the strategic plan, um, to leverage public land, like the Gorman Project down on one hundred third. Um, naturally occurring affordable housing like on Ogden, um, targeting home repair loans for low-income seniors and, uh, inclusionary zoning ordinances. Um, I think the city can also, um, relax some of its ordinance on those accessory drilling units, tiny homes and incentivize remodeling. Um, it really would be in our best interest because we're below that ten percent federal decree to figure it out ourselves rather than having somebody impose it on us. Um, we need to be open-minded and, and flexible because it really is the right thing to do because we want to be a multi-generational and inclusive city. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Malaki Meslin.
I also agree with the measures that the city council has recently taken. Um, and I think more incentives, um, are definitely a way to go. Um, I would also offer that defining what affordable means, um, and setting a very specific goal. And whether that is the ten percent that maybe we're heading for or something more than that. Um, when you set a goal, you really do rally people around it. Um, and it really takes that strategic plan to say, okay, we have a strategic plan in place. Um, that will probably be revised in twenty twenty-four, uh, making sure that, uh, we're looking to see what things from the previous strategic plan we have not yet achieved. Affordable housing is definitely one of those things. And then putting some weight behind it, I would also offer that working with community groups who, who have folks who don't currently live in Naperville. We listen to our own residents all the time on this subject. Um, we're going to get a very specific perspective potentially. So listening to folks who live outside of our community and asking them what it is that they actually need in housing, um, to help support them.
Thank you. Um, candidate Sayad, you will be the first to answer question number five. What are the top three financial priorities for Naperville?
So for me, uh, as the economic development is the top priority, which we as a city has to take care of that. And we have seen some imbalance between two zero four school district and two zero three. So that, that is something which is my top priority and we need to promote women businesses in Naperville. So that is very, very critical. So that is the second. And third is encourage minority businesses. So this other three, top priorities, yeah.
Thank you. Candidate Trendler, what are your top three financial priorities?
Um, infrastructure. So are we have an aging infrastructure that is going to require continuous uh, monitoring and managing and planning for, um, that's significant expense coming up that we need to consider. Uh, economic development is critical. Uh, we are a land. We are a landlocked community now, so we are absolutely going to have to become much more proactive in our approach to development so that we can be replacing the and augmenting the revenue from development that our community is accustomed to. And then also, we need to also work on diversifying our businesses across our entire community so that we can support, especially as a two oh four taxpayer, working to increase our commercial economic development in the two oh four area is going to be critical.
Thank you, candidate Upol.
I, for me, I think one of the most important thing that I've come to see is that we need to look at development, commercial development on the south side of the city, which is feeding into District two four schools. Because we hear about these inequities and we can no longer continue to ignore it. So we need to do something, whether it involves establishing business districts or providing other kinds of incentives. And I would even say maybe, you know, looking at some of the activities that city conducts, trying to move them to a venue on the, that side of the city. So people are naturally drawn to that area. Another one for me would be to also look at making sure that our city is able to provide programs or not provide, but allow those businesses that will serve our seniors. Their needs are going to be increasing, putting an increasing pressure on the city population. So we need to look at that, also looking at some services for our teens and our young adults so they can find internship opportunities within the city, the businesses that are conducting business here. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Pansal.
As one of my priorities is a public safety, I would like to bring more power to our law enforcement, more advancement and the best equipment to support our law enforcement. Number two is fiscal responsibility. The budget has gone up six hundred and three point three two million, which is pretty high. I would like to curtain down to some areas and bring more funding, which is a serious issue, the budget, the high budget. So that is another financial priority to the city at this point. Number three is more economic development and supporting local businesses, which would create more jobs for our youth, to retain our youth in the city and bring more revenues and more sales, sales tax to bring overall good ratio for the city's structure. And helping those properties which are vacant for several years, which can bring more return on investment in the next couple of, next few years for the city. Thank you.
Candidate Kelly.
Thank you. First, I think is just make sure, making sure that we continue the positive steps that we've had over the past many years. So I think I mentioned at the outset that right now we've got the lowest tax rate we've had as a city in the last fifty years, which is pretty amazing. And, and that's no accident. It takes a lot of hard work to get there. We've also managed to increase our cash reserves and decrease our debt over the last four years. And so we want to make sure all those three metrics stay going in, in a good direction is most important. Everything else flows from there. Second, I would say is infrastructure. We've got some very significant infrastructure costs coming up that through no fault of our own, really, one is a state mandated phosphorus reduction at our wastewater treatment plant. That's going to cost upwards of fifty million dollars. We also have to replace our police radio system, which is going to cost twenty million dollars. So there's huge budget items coming up that we've got to figure out good, responsible ways to pay for. And third, I would say public safety, making sure the police and fire and public works departments are all fully funded and have the resources they need for training and infrastructure and personnel.
Thank you, candidate Langenbaum.
Well, first thing, development. The last thing that we want is for the burden to fall on our, our residents. So we need to attract more businesses to South Naperville and to the Ogden Corridor in order to prove, to provide that balance of residential and commercial taxes. Infrastructure, we have two big projects, you know, on board, the, the Springbrook wastewater treatment. I mean, that is going to cost in the millions and kind of hinging on some regulatory requirements for that. And then, you know, the IMEA, we own a coal plant, and so that's pretty big infrastructure. So getting, you know, renegotiating that contract, getting out of it is, is definitely an infrastructure project. And then we have American Rescue Funds. We have thirteen million in funds to earmark by twenty twenty four for spending by twenty twenty six. And I think that's an opportunity for the council to provide some vision on where that should be spent. I think the citizen survey that'll be coming out this, this summer will provide some guidance on that and some measurable data from the residents to see what it is that, that they want.
Thank you, candidate Malatki Meslin.
I think building on the strong fiscal position we're in really means reinvesting. And I think reinvesting in two specific areas that is in those infrastructures or capital improvements, specifically our wastewater treatment plant, as well as replacing our water mains that are aging at this point. The other infrastructure piece that we don't often think of as infrastructure is technology. From a citywide perspective, technology is what really allows us to provide the customer service to our residents that they have come to know and love. But it needs to be constantly replaced, constant training, constant upgrades. So making sure that we have the top of the line as well as the most efficient to provide that customer service to our residents. And lastly, human resources across the board. Our police, our fire, we are a large organization of a thousand employees. We all know what the statistics are like right now in the job market. We want to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining the best talent with the best benefits that we can provide to them so that we can keep the city running the way we want it.
Thank you. So question six, we'll go to candidate Trendler first. And that question is, how do you propose balancing development with quality of life issues for Naperville residents?
Ah, so, yeah, this actually also ties into taking that more proactive approach to development. There are certainly development projects on the table right now, and every single development project impacts quality of life here in Naperville. And it's going to be critical that the development that does happen is not at the cost and the expense of residents. So we want to make sure that funding is equitable and balanced and not fully put upon, thrust upon the residents. We want to make sure that we have, are maintaining our green spaces and our recreational spaces. And our development also supports our cultural amenities that we are accustomed to here in Naperville, such as our park district. And we also want to make sure that as development occurs, we are ensuring that that development is green and focused on being sustainable for our future.
Thank you, candidate Upol.
Yes, absolutely. We need development in the city. Sometimes that development may look like, you know, repurposing of buildings because one, that's one of our challenges because you want to be sure that we do not allow an area to start decaying in such a way that it affects the quality of life for neighboring people who live in the neighborhood and other businesses. And the quality of life, you know, when we look at development, making sure that we make the right kind of decisions, environmentally sustainable. And the city has already done a great deal in having the green purchasing plan because that way we make sure our builders understand what they should be doing, what the commercial entities, what they should be doing in order to meet these standards. I think we can go a step further and also allow our residents who are doing smaller remodeling projects and all those things, that they can also bring sustainability into the work they are doing in their homes. So I think finding that balance between development and the quality of life is of course critical.
Thank you, candidate Pansal.
I, I am all for the development in the city without compromising the current residents' views and thoughts. Any development is a key for the city. It brings revenue and sales, but at the same time, it brings density, crowding, crime, traffic. So these all needs need to be considered before coming any development. It has to be done with a proper zoning code structure, structurally and planned. It needs to be done with the proper building codes as well. I believe that developers should be, should have done the proper background check because it should be safe and well-prepared for the seniors, youth, and people with disabilities. I hope it doesn't bring any more crime to the city because I am, the public safety is my number one priority, mental health issues and overall depression has been grown up. So development should be done with all these considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Kelly.
Thank you. For me, the, the key answer to that question is to sit down at the table and have respectful conversations and to listen, to truly listen to what residents' concerns really are and try to understand those and go back to the developer and express those concerns in a way that they can understand and that makes sense for them and find a way to bridge the gap. So I've done that the last four years. I mean, one minute stuff on this one, I could talk about development negotiations for hours probably. A few really quick ones, Polo Club initially on one hundred nineteenth Street had a huge amount of objection. That developer didn't really listen. I voted no, and that project went away. We've since had a new developer come in. They have listened. We've gotten them to negotiate and make some compromises that are going to be much for the better of the residents there. Market Meadows is one where the developer wanted a storage unit. Some residents ordering it were concerned about. We found a way to bridge that gap and ameliorate the concern. Main Street Primanade is another one where the height and proximity was a problem for the residents. We found a way to bridge that gap and approve something that was acceptable.
Thank you, candidate Langenbaum.
I think the, the Fifth Avenue project is a, is a good example here and is what brought me to, to go to city council meetings back in two thousand sixteen because that was development where, you know, that, that's a prime piece of land, which will be developed at some point. But the quality of life for the, the surrounding neighbors wasn't really brought into it. Like we were, we were able to discuss, but then it wasn't actually brought into the, the development plans. And so I think the city has learned and there have been some great examples of that collaboration where they brought the stakeholders to the table. Market Meadows was a great example where there were some issues and they sat down with the, the neighborhood and they figured it out. And now it's a vibrant, great development. And the same thing could happen in Fifth Avenue Station. And so I think that's a great example of where you really do need to balance. You get, you need to get all the stakeholders at the table and actually listen to what they're saying. Everybody will compromise and, and come up with a great solution.
Thank you, candidate Malatki Meslin.
I agree that these things don't have to be mutually exclusive, that you can have strong development as long as you have respectful conversations and the parties coming to the table are doing it with civility and respect. I think we all love Naperville. The folks who are fighting against a developer are definitely those folks who are trying to make their voices heard and getting to the root of what's concerning them, why this is troubling, and also understanding what the benefits might be to bringing those developments in, I, I think is absolutely our responsibility as a city council. I mean, this is one of the primary functions that we serve as city council members. And I also think that one of our other key roles is making sure that we're really clear from a city services perspective, how these new developments are going to impact residents. So drawing those very clear lines and educating folks so that we can all make really strong and sound thoughtful decisions.
Thank you, candidate Sa.
Okay, thank you. We're all here because I think we are passionate about community and quality of life for different ages, for different neighborhoods, for different perspectives. And then also the transition within each of those. Folks moving from South Naperville up to North Naperville, what can they expect? I think the city actually has a ton of different resources that they could do a better job of communicating so that folks then can feel like they're getting needed information from our great city. Many people talked about developments. I think that we need to do that and strike a balance so that we can then look at how we are supporting our school districts in both two oh four and two oh three. Overall, quality of life is important when we also have to plan for our future by providing that lens of sustainability for the quality of life for everybody as it is that we move into, into, into the world, right? We're talking about the coal power plant development. All of this has to be the lens that we apply when we're making decisions. Thank you.
And candidate Saye.
Yes, so my thought process is that, you know, we need to have respectful and balanced development. Should not be a crazy where we are running for development without thinking about our seniors, our next generation and other things, you know? So we need to have a plan. How do we develop? Which area we develop? And what in returns we get it, like south of Naperville. Definitely, we need some major development that side. And we need a lot of, you know, taxes there because once you have your development that side and our taxes will be reduced. Two zero four especially, when I'm talking about this thing because two zero four has got, you know, school district has got less businesses there and the residents pays high taxes there compared to two zero three school district and north side and other side. So maybe we need to be very respectful about the decisions, what we take it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Upol, your first for question number seven, which is, do you think Naperville's ordinance on conflicts of interest while serving as a council member is effective? Why or why not?
I, from what I know, I believe it is effective because, you know, making sure that your interest in any entity that is doing business with the city being forthright about it builds confidence within the community that the actions you are taking, the decisions you are making are not for any personal gain but for the, in the best interest of our community. So I think it's absolutely important that we do that and continue to pursue it. And no council person should be, you know, should be opposed to that. So I certainly support that. And I think it's, it's as I believe the, you know, I'm not sure of the number. I think it's five hundred dollars, but I think it's, it's a great way to start and build for communities to feel that our council people are representing us, not any other entity that they might be interested in. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Pansal.
City council is working for our residents. Naperville is a wonderful city because of its amenities, its parks, public schools. And these are the reasons which we have more, the population of one hundred and fifty thousand people. Anything, any decision based on public safety, crime, mental health, domestic violence, this, this needs to be considered, number one, and this should be the priority before making any decisions by city council. Number two, without raising any taxes, any, any burden on the homeowners and the residents, seniors and, and the teenagers and young couples. That needs to be in consideration. So fiscal responsibility should be the priority before making any decisions on the ordinances by city council. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Kelly.
I, I don't know if you can or not, but could you repeat the question?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Do you think Naperville's ordinance on conflicts of interest while serving as a council member is effective?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So, yes, generally, we, there's a couple of things at play. I think you might be talking about there. One, we have a conflict ordinance and there's a state gift ordinance for all elected officials. I think both of those are, are effective and as they should be. We also passed an ethics ordinance a couple of years ago that related to disclosure of campaign contributions. If a council member took a donation of more than seven hundred fifty dollars and then that donor came to a council meeting to speak either for or against an issue, I think that was also appropriate. It was not meant as a gotcha in any way. It was just meant to foster transparency as much as possible with council members in the community. So the community knows if there is anything financially that should be disclosed. It is at a council meeting. It's come up a couple of times. It's been very brief, handled very well. A council member will simply say, I accepted a contribution in excess of that amount. And then we move on with the agenda item. It's not caused any problems or drama of any kind, so I think it was appropriate and, and should remain in place. Thank you.
Candidate Langenbaum.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a trust issue in all levels of government, and so the, the ordinances are about trust. I was in support of the ethics ordinance back in twenty twenty. I even wrote a letter to the editor in my support of it. And that was designed just to give residents the confidence that council members are being transparent and not influenced by campaign donations. And it shifted the burden from the resident having to go figure it out to actually making it transparent and obvious on the city's website. I mean, we, we want to trust our leaders. And, you know, both of these are, are small things that our council members to do, can do to bring that level of trust to residents.
Thank you, candidate Malatki Meslin.
Yeah, I, I absolutely think this is just a small measure that helps build trust with the community and builds transparency. We can, you know, often think about how people are making decisions and make assumptions about the work that they do on a daily basis or the people that they're friends with. And we won't always be able to verify that information, but I think something like a campaign contribution or a monetary gift are much more clear metrics that we can use. And again, it's a very small ask. And as Patrick pointed out, you know, a simple question that needs to be answered and then folks can draw their conclusions. But I do think that Um, and then folks can draw their conclusions. Um, but I do think that um it's effective and it does build trust and transparency between our residents and our city council members.
Candidate South.
Okay, um, so I was actually surprised that this was not already passed. Um, the original proposal was for seven hundred, I'm sorry, it was for five hundred dollars and then it passed at um seven hundred and fifty. You know, when you're elected, you hold your elected officials with some someone's elected, you hold your elected officials, I think to a greater um degree of accountability and integrity. Several folks mentioned it is about trust. Uh, we're all part of a community, and so sometimes these things do come up. Um, but again, having that uh transparency um and accountability to raise your hand, um just advise of that. And then move on with business, either recuse yourself or move on with business. Inevitably, it will happen, um, but we just have to hold ourselves to a higher standard. Thank you.
Candidate Said.
So trust and transparency is the key at at the city level. Because when we are leaders, we need to have this trust. And we have to be very transparent about those things when somebody is taking a uh donation of seven fifty and above, they should definitely declare it, you know, so that that's one thing. And second thing is, yes, there can be conflict of business and definitely they should give a declaration if they have something like that in advance. So that as a city, as a city leader, we all know what is going to happen. Yeah, that's and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Pansal, you'll be first on question number eight. What are your recommendations to make Naperville a more environmentally sustainable community?
Three R, if we use three R in our lives, uh re reuse, reduce and recycle, definitely we can make uh our city, our home more sustainable. Uh, at my home, I have a hundred percent LED lights, solar panels outside um the uh a area. We have uh uh five, a new fiberglass of uh installed in the uh house with the grass doors, windows all sealed. So these, if we can start and water and energy saver uh uh applications, if we can start working from home, why not? We can start working from the city. So we can make, we can raise this awareness and uh work on strategic plans to develop and prepare more environmental sustainability community. Uh, promoting green building, a culture that will conserve and our water, energy and waste. Uh, reducing carbon emissions and installing smart HVAC systems that would also help I know from protecting our natural resources.
Thank you, candidate Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, there are a number of things we can do, probably the most significant we've already talked about, which is the I M E A contract, uh in my opinion. Uh, not to minimize other steps, but that is really the elephant in the room when we have ninety percent of our power being supplied by fossil fuels. Uh, that that's that's the biggest piece of the puzzle. Um, so we've got to get that figured out over the next few years, and we've talked a little bit about that already. Aside from that, the next most important, I would say, is uh adopting this plan for sustainable Naperville Naperville twenty thirty six. Uh, they've given council dozens of recommendations and we need to act on those, some of which we already have. But there's a lot more we can do. Uh, one tangible step that we did take in the last couple of years was hire our first full-time staff member. Uh, specifically focused on sustainability, and we just recently added another point five uh full-time uh employee. So we've now got one and a half uh staff members where a few years ago we got zero. They can help us actually implement the steps that we want to take to make this more sustainable.
Candidate Long and Bow.
Um, well, there are so many ways that we can become more sustainable and uh Nest, the, you know, Naperville Environmental Environment and Sustainability Task Force. Uh, I mean, they've got a work plan already where they've got like seventy different actions that the city can take. Uh, I mean, everything from waste to natural resources to ordinances to to changes in city leadership. Um, and some of them are easy. Um, just, for example, educating residents on opportunities where you can have rebates like for lawnmower conversion and um you know, recycling Christmas tree lights. A lot of things people just don't know that they can do. And others, like evaluating our contract with the I M E A are definitely going to require a lot more heavy lifting and a lot more courage from from council. But council can do both. Um, they can do the easy things and the hard things. Uh, and they should not shy away from incorporating sustainability into everything, whether it's economic, social and its infrastructure decisions. Thank you.
Candidate Malachi Meslin.
Um, I again, I think one of the largest ways that we can improve our sustainability is um addressing the contract that we have with I M E A. Um, but more broadly, I think of sustainability and environmental sustainability. Um, kind of in the same vein as diversity, equity and inclusion work, meaning that it touches everything. Um, so it can't be something that's entirely separate from or a specific initiative or objective that lives outside of the way that we function on a daily basis and and all the different ways that the city functions. So um really truly taking the plan that Nest put together and integrating it into all the other objectives. Changes, updates, infrastructure um that we're already um planning on doing. Um, but with a lens of sustainability. Um, and really having a cohesive front on city council so that these measures can be passed. Um, and so that there is enthusiasm, right, and excitement over uh sustainability as opposed to doing it begrudgingly.
Thank you, candidate South.
Naperville, to commit to going green. Adding it to our mission statement is part of my platform. I've read the entirety of the sustainability report. It's actually easy to read. It's broken down by sections. Jody, kudos to you on that. It's a great report. We need to start now to create that infrastructure for all of the recommendations. It was created at a point in time. Our world continues to evolve. We have new technologies coming on and we need to start creating plans to update the information that we have in there and create the infrastructure around it. Infrastructure for our EVs. Many of us have them, myself included. Infrastructure for um for really everything. We're talking about um even our lead pipes and all the things that we're doing within city business. And we need to communicate those to our residents, sealing your ducts, um how you can weather strip, what you can do, even mulching your leaves, which is a hot topic that we get asked about all the time. All of it by adding to the mission statement and going green.
Thank you, uh candidate Said.
So greenery is very critical for our city, for our next generation. We need to maintain the greenery. And we need to plan and plant and plant trees. That is very, very important for every house, I can say. So my my uh vision will be that every house should have greenery inside and at, you know, even at the balcony side also, if you have. Second is, I met a gentleman from uh Nest today and have spent some time to learn about cycling and about walking. This is again a very, very important thing. You know, we we should start slowly moving to cycling if if you are sitting living in in city. I think instead of taking my car or other things, we can start, you know, taking our cycle or start walking. It is healthy as well as safe things. And safe energy is something which we all have to be very mindful and safe based foot. So these are the things which I feel that we should take a initiative on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Trendler.
Uh, yeah, so definitely should become a priority. Um, so this is why I'm running. We need to make this a priority, integrate it into our uh city planning strategically across the board because it does absolutely impact everything. Um, it's how we build our economy. It is how we protect and take care of and make sure that our environment and people are safe. Um, and it's is also often see how we take care of our natural resources. That's one of the things that we presented um through Nest is we we have a decision matrix so that essentially makes it and incorporates all of these components that do make up a sustainable community into the decision-making process, and this needs to be prioritized and implemented. But it does start with the city actually coming out and committing to sustainability and reducing our emissions and saying that this is a priority for us. In whatever shape or form that's going to turn out to be, putting it into the mission statements, making a resolution ordinance. It needs to be made a priority and it is a part of diversity, equity, inclusion to make a fully sustainable community. So, thank you.
Thank you, candidate Upal.
Uh, absolutely, because uh without taking care of our environment, uh it doesn't matter how much financial success we have. We'll be paying a price. We're already paying a price. And I believe the city has uh done some wonderful things in their purchasing plan, the green purchasing plan. By having a department now looking after these issues, the sustainability coordinator, those are all the steps that are um in moving us in the right direction. Certainly looking at uh the electricity contract in, you know, twelve years or so. Or we'll be looking at it before, but making sure that we put enough pressure. Naperville has already done that by being one of its the the largest customer for I E M A. It has already put pressure that their reliance, their reliance on coal has gone down a little. So uh so those are all steps in the right direction. I'm a great proponent of something called smart cities. I believe that there are many, many cities in Europe, especially in European Union that are adapt adopting that concept to bring more uh, you know, more energy to what we are doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, candidate Kelly. What are your priorities and recommendation to address ongoing traffic issues in Naperville?
Well, if anybody can solve that, they can run for higher office in this. Um, it's really tough, you know, but but it is a problem uh that we need to constantly work on. It's uh it comes back rated more often than not as the number one concern people have in Naperville, which in some ways is a good thing. Uh, you know, it means the city is thriving, the downtown is busy. Uh, if nobody went downtown, it'd be easier to go through. We've got a busy downtown. Uh, just yesterday was a nice day, but uh in middle of February, it was, it was really, it really happened down there. It took a long time to get through. Um, it's good. What we need to do, I think, i- is one thing is with new developments, we do need to factor that in and look at it really closely, make sure that we're factoring in future growth and and making sure we're building roads wide enough. Um, we should look at problematic intersections. In large part, we're built out, so we're looking at what we already have. Uh, just on the council agenda coming up on Tuesday is changing uh stop signs at certain intersections. It's small things, but small things can add up and making sure that we're handling problematic intersections as safely as possible. So it is important.
Thank you, candidate Long and Bow.
Um, I mean, I I haven't heard traffic come up at city council in quite some time. It was pretty big a few years ago when there were all the drag racing and stuff. And so there was a lot of talk about it then. Haven't heard about it recently. Um, I am a proponent of the the calming toolkit, which does look at ways to slow down traffic in kind of non-traditional ways, you know, whether it's adding parking and stuff. I am a uh proponent of that. Um, you know, I think, you know, making sure that we do have enough traffic officers on the streets. Um, you know, making sure that they're they're patrolling and and making sure that that's happening. Um, I think bike lanes are another way to control traffic as well as part of that traffic calming toolkit. Um, if we have bike lanes, that kind of naturally slows traffic down. So those are all ways and also just, you know, adding to sustainability. Um, you know, for biking, we're going to need to look at public safety. Um, e-bikes are going to be, you know, coming up. We're going to see a lot of those. And so, um I mean, traffic is just one of those things that we have with uh with lots of growth and um it's always at the top of the list.
Thank you, candidate Malachi Meslin.
So I grew up in Michigan, um and we would joke that we had two seasons, winter and construction. Um, and that our roads were always under construction and uh the earlier conversation was about infrastructure and water mains and being replaced. Things like that um are going to cause more traffic uh because right sections of road are are cleared off uh in order for those repairs to be done and and um in a timely fashion. So um I didn't just make, I just sound like I made it worse than it is. But that's all to say that I think we have some infrastructures in place um from a technology standpoint that really allowed um the ability for the city to alert residents when traffic flows are in problems, right? When we're having, if there's an accident, if there's road construction so that people can um divert themselves to another area to use a different route to detour. Um, you know, we're probably going to need to amplify that a little bit more if we anticipate a lot more um construction on those roads. I would also offer that um our biggest concern should not be necessarily flow of traffic, but should be safety and really addressing intersections and areas where um we are concerned about bikers and walkers. Um, as well as um just heavy accident areas and how we might be able to uh remediate some of those spots.
Candidate South.
So this is, I think, um a complicated issue. You've got parking. You've got then um the congested arteries within the city and then within our neighborhoods um traffic out there, folks who are running stop signs or whipping around curves too fast. Uh, so I think the first thing that we need to do is really understand what that looks like. Uh, traffic studies within some of the neighborhoods uh where there where people are blowing off those stop signs. We've got little flags in my neighborhood. And in some cases, that's not very effective. So I think we need to focus on safety first within our neighborhoods for our residents. After that, I think we can look at some of the civil engineering uh recommendations that we've had around some of the development projects so that we can expand our arteries. And then finally, with parking, I argue around supply and demand to draw people to other areas so that we can lessen downtown. But then in general, looking at our overall parking studies so that we can then look to see what kind of development we need for that. Thank you.
Uh, candidate Said.
Okay, so traffic is something which is not new to us. Every city has a problem of traffic. I have traveled to almost like twenty-eight countries and I've lived in four different countries. And I have seen, I have faced, and I've been complaining about traffic for last forty-nine years, I can say, you know. So traffic is something, okay, but solution, yes, we need to look for solution at a city level. Definitely, we need widening roads. Second, I think we need flyovers, especially on fifty-nine. So once you're done with the eighty-eight to fifty-nine, we need some flyover so that we can manage, smoothen the traffic on fifty-nine. Downtown Naperville, yes, there are challenges. We will definitely need to have some duck parking so that, you know, we have some extra parking that side. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, candidate Trendler.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is definitely one of those, uh, it's tied into our complete streets policy that we have. Um, so for example, the um sharrows for the bike lane on Gartner Road um are the latest in bike, bike traffic provisioning um that we've had in at least five years. And we need to be working on developing our biking, safe biking infrastructure. This is one of my priorities for our community. Um, it's going to get people out of their cars. It's going to make people healthier. And it's going to give us safer transportation op- op- options for um for biking. Um, we also need to be looking at ways to incentivize public transportation, which is not common when we live around a car-centered development community. Um, we need to be also thinking about our future uses. So transportation as a service, whether that's going to be driverless cars or how that's going to look. And we need to be planning for those types of things now so that we are ready for them in the future.
Thank you, candidate Upal.
Uh, yes, and as I'm trying to come up with my priorities, as I was trying to coalesce my ideas, to me, safe roads for all users is an extremely important uh uh mission to work toward because we need to be sure our pedestrians are safe, our bicyclists. And especially now is e-bikes are supposed to be coming our way in a rather large number. Let's see what happens, but uh we need to be sure we are ready for them. We do not, and you know, when we look at things like traffic com- calming toolkit, those are wonderful ways of managing traffic and making it safe, our roads safe for our families and the commi- you know, the neighborhoods. But looking at things like uh fifty-nine, if we have widened, it's been widened from two lanes to four lanes to eight lanes. And I don't think that problem is has gone away. In fact, it's gotten, it gotten worse. So looking at development and seeing preparing the infrastructure ahead of whatever we do, I think it's going to be critical going forward.
Thank you, candidate Pansal.
Uh, nip, uh, well, we have already have hundred and fifty thousand residents, which is a good mix of seniors and sixteen-year-old who can drive. So definitely, traffic is an issue. We have already identified few streets like Washington Street Bridge, um uh North Aurora Road two forty-eight, which needs an expansion to control the traffic. And that also needs high capital investment. So we cannot do every street making broader, brings more funding or heavy taxes to the residents. Uh, I would suggest if we can do more and more carpooling, if you are going, you can have a group with your friends and neighbors. If you can uh su- suggest more carpooling towards a school, adding uh to your work. Adding more uh bike days to the school that will help reducing some traffic. As we all know, the public safety is our number one priority. But any expansion to the roads leads to more funding, more capital investment. If we can curtail down some budget and after we are done with a priority, we can use, do that in later. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Long and Bow. Our last question for the evening. Would you consider walkability and bikeability as a priority for the city council? Would you consider walkability and bikeability as a priority for the city council? Why or why not?
Oh, absolutely. And I mean, that kind of goes with, you know, hand in hand with the last question as well, like you've got the combination of a lot of traffic. And you've got bikeability, walkability, you know, those two don't necessarily fit well together when you have so many cars and bikes. And 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 walkers. Um I'm a runner. Um in fact, I'm on day one thousand three hundred and sixty-five of a consecutive streak. So I am on the streets quite a lot. Um yeah, and so that is a a big priority for me. And I would love to be able to connect the north to the south, you know, from train to trails. Um. When I was training for triathlons, like biking was was tough, like I would have loved to have ridden in some of the forest preserves. And there's really no easy way to get there. Um e-bikes are going to be an issue as well because they're going to want to be on the paths. But they go a lot faster than normal bikes. And so having those on the same paths as walkers and just normal bike riders is is a problem as well. So that needs to be taken care of um in addition.
Thank you, candidate Malakim Maslin.
So my husband is a cyclist and I fear for his life every time he gets on the road. Um he only cycles at certain times of day. Um and he's incredibly careful, but he's at the mercy of who he's sharing the road with. So um looking for opportunities as a city council. To integrate more bikeability and walkability um into our current state, um certain sections of road, piloting areas to see how they're functioning. Talking with community groups, there's plenty out there uh who are doing great work and trying to educate all of us about how we can improve those systems. Um especially looking at new developments and thinking about what the bikeability and walkability of those developments are. Um and encouraging developers um to think more critically about that. We are trying to encourage less emissions and um more mobile people. Um where they're exercising or using that for recreation as well as exercise or transportation. Um and any way that we can encourage that has so many different benefits. But um I do think that the city council can take that on as one of their objectives.
Thank you, candidate South.
So this is a large portion of my platform as well. Um I believe that we should create hubs within both north and south Naperville. Um to, this is kind of part of what I was talking about earlier with the supply and demand equa- equation. Um create the demand for people to uh or rather the supply for people to demand in these different areas. Uh um part of the development there on Washington, I believe, should be reexamined to include separate bike lanes. Today, we have these little signals that are drawn, um and it's not effective. I am a triathlete and I don't feel comfortable. Training on the streets of Naperville, even with those. There was a study in Mexico that showed a bus passing. Um and the person reacting to it, and that's not what we need here. I think walkability is extremely important, and I think biking as well from a sustainability play. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Said.
For me, biking and walking is little less, I can say, that, you know, but my focus will be on biking and walking. And once I'm there on the city council or or I will be that person who will be championing for this so that we have a separate biking line. So that, you know, people can safely uh bike their cycles or they can walk. So that is my uh priority. I can take it on this. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Trendler.
Yes, this is absolutely one of my priority platform issues as well. Um after doing community surveys through Nest, we learned. This is what our community values and wants and is very interested in and expects from a community like ours. Um again, with the event um events of the e-bikes, it's becoming much more popular. We need to start planning for this type of transportation. Um as a service. So active mobility is critical in improving the overall health, reducing pollution. And making our sustain, our community more sustainable. Um this is what our community wants and we absolutely must do this. I don't feel safe biking on it. I love my e-bike, but it's very, it's hard to bike on the bike paths because it is totally different speed. Um than what is, can be done on our roads and we need to make it um accessible on our roads and for our, for e-biking. Um as well as anybody else who wants to use our roadways for transportation as well besides vehicles.
Thank you, candidate Upo.
Um absolutely, uh making our city more uh increasing its walkability because I was reading the. Um uh Bridges Twenty Twenty-three, it says that our walkability, actually, the Naperville score is very low over there. And I think when, as we, as we plan for road improvement, et cetera, this has to be kept in mind. I know that uh we are going to be um rebuilding the bridge on um on Eighty-Seventh Street. And there is that, when when that planning begins, when that work begins, we have to be sure there's a way for people to safely cross that area. Whether they are walkers or they're taking a bike. Um I'm also concerned every time I look at Naperville Boulevard and I see, I know the road ownership is by. Different um uh government entities, so that that's always been a problem. I look at me from Maple Brook all to, all the way to the expressway. There is no way for people to actually use either a bike. So I want our city to be proactive and see what can we do to improve the bikeability and walkability. Within the city. Thank you.
Candidate Pansa.
Uh walking is one of my favorite activities to do in the summer. I would love to walk to the city council, uh city hall. And uh but definitely that could be the option, but as well, biking could be one of the better options as well. Uh that way we are, uh as we talked about the traffic earlier, that way we can uh help in reducing the traffic. Pollution, more conversion and less uh less driving on the streets that could al- always be helpful. With a safe side uh sidewalks. So but biking is could be a good option and in that way we can use uh, we can help. Promoting our Naperville to be a more resilient city by working on both either walking or biking. So both are the good options for me.
And candidate Kelly.
Thank you, yeah. It's uh it's something that's really important to me. It's actually the very first city issue I ever got involved with a number of years ago. Was uh trying to reopen the cow tunnel from uh the neighborhoods north of downtown to have a safe way for pedestrians and bicyclists to get to downtown. I worked real hard on that and and then got interested in other issues obviously as well, but uh it's something that is really important. Um it's a, it truly is a safety issue, you know, mentioned we're the safest city in America. The most recent um accident uh fatality. Or or crim- not criminal, but it was an accident uh fatality that we suffered unfortunately was at Edward Hospital, a pedestrian walking along Martin Avenue. That we got hit by a car and the the layout over there really isn't great. Um and we're actually just in the process of considering a a new development in that corner. That we're going to have to take that into consideration. Another specific area, I'm I'm not ready to give up on yet, finding a way to cross Two Hundred Forty-Eighth Avenue. Where we're going to widen the street and maybe trying to find some type of a bridge uh system that's better than the Refuge Island that that we're considering now.
Thank you. Now you'll all get a one-minute closing statement and we will start with Rebecca Malakim Maslin.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my thoughts and feelings and my values with you this evening. Um as I mentioned earlier, I think I'm uniquely positioned. To support the residents of Naperville. I am a community builder who's spent her career uh working for municipalities. For schools and for nonprofits. I care deeply about the constituents um that we serve and living our mission every day. And ensuring that the decisions that we make as a city council are mission-driven so that um every resident feels seen, heard and valued. My name is Rebecca Malakim Maslin and I hope to have your support.
Thank you. Ashley South, you have one minute for your closing statement.
Okay, thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and for giving us the opportunity to complete the questionnaire for votefouroneone.org. To help folks learn more about the candidates. Again, I'm Ashley South. I'm running for Naperville City Council. I have the skills needed to be successful. I have a strong financial background to examine and review the budget. I'm a small business owner focused on helping other small business owners and I live my passion for community every day in my job. As I listen and connect with residents. A vote for me, Ashley South, is a vote for thriving Naperville. Please vote for me on April fourth. For more information, you can go to ashleysouth.org. Look for me, number nine, South on the ballot. The lower end of that ballot. Thank you.
Um Ash Fox Sayed, your one-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you so much for organizing this uh wonderful forum for all of us. Uh community, Naperville community, I listen. I care and I act. As your councilman, I will use my experience, leadership skills from my previous community work. And present businesses. And I have a passion to serve the Naperville. I have a passion to serve the community. And this is from my school days, which I have been carrying it with me and brought those passion to Naperville. So give me an opportunity. Give me a thing and I will definitely prove you as one of your city council member who will bring people together, work with the people. And make a difference in Naperville. So vote for Ash Fox Sayed, support me and check my track record, what I have been doing it. I'm somebody who does not like talking about myself. I believe in doing things. I'm a taskmaster. So you can see what I have been doing in city for many, many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Jody Trendler, your one-minute closing statement, please.
So, thank you so much for this opportunity. Um very grateful for the League of Women Voters and all the work you do promoting our democracy. Um so we need leadership on council that understands and is capable of championing systemic city planning and economic development. In a collaborative, inclusive way. And I've already proven through my experience uh for fifteen years. As well as with my education and sustainable community development, that you can trust in me to get things done in a cost-effective, pragmatic way. And I am ready, willing and able to do the work that's necessary to ensure a thriving community. So if you want someone who knows how to and work with, will work with you to build a a resilient, strong community, vote for me, Jody Trendler. Number four, honor before four-four. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maru Upo, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Uh thank you so much for hosting this forum and wonderful opportunity to meet our community. And I, with this long record of serving our community. In so many different ways, I want to continue to serve um the people of my city. And I believe that with my experience of this, the people of the city, my knowledge, um you know, somebody who's. But who's a non-partisan person who understands how the city works, I have the experience, the knowledge and outstanding decision-making skills. Because I base all my decisions on listening to all the stakeholders and bringing people together. I'm also a pragmatist to understand that we, you know, we do not go to the extremes and try to solve problems in a unilateral way, but working together. So I want to be that non-partisan leader for the city and uh you and me, you will have that councilwoman who embodies all these qualities of integrity. Experience, service, and I am the last one on that ballot for council seat. So please vote for me, Madhu Upo. Thank you.
Um Magna Banzal, your one-minute closing statement, please.
Thank you, League of Women Voter for hosting this forum. Uh thank you for this opportunity. Uh my strong finance and business background for over twenty years, experience as an elected official, working with several boards. Having raised my family and business in Naperville not only motivates me, but also qualifies me for the best candidate to be on this job. From and ready to hit from the day one. I will bring much-needed minorities on the dais. As well as my diverse perspective to the council. If elected, my main priorities are public safety, mental health, overall well-being and fiscal responsibility, economic development. Diversity, inclusion and bringing some more common sense to the policies while approaching to the issues. More power to law enforcement, bringing revenues for economic development without raising taxes. I need your help. I need your support to make all this happen. I'm number eight on the ballot. Please vote for me. Please visit my website, Magna for Council if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Kelly, your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you, and uh thank you again to the League for hosting us tonight and thank you to all of the Naperville voters who elected me to city council four years ago. Uh it's been an absolute privilege to serve our city over the past four years and I hope to do so uh for another four years. Uh I've helped make significant progress on a number of important issues, improving sustainability, how developers and residents work together. Uh maintaining balanced budget and protecting our community. Uh one thing I think we've learned over the past four years, however, is that. Uh the issues can come and go and and we really don't know exactly what we might face in the next four years. Uh so I think maybe the most important thing is to have council members who are dedicated to working with each other. Uh with all residents and businesses in our community in good faith to move our city forward, no matter what challenges we might face. Uh I believe that I offer that experience and proven level-headed leadership uh and ask for your vote honor before April fourth, starting this Thursday. Or uh early voting starts on the twenty-third, this Thursday of this week, uh to remain one of your city council members moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alison Langenbaum, your one-minute closing statement.
So again, I'm Alison Langenbaum and uh what can you expect from me as a councilwoman? So first of all, I've attended every council meeting since two thousand nineteen. I am fully engaged in all the beauty Naperville possesses. I've been in the corporate world for thirty years. Like I said earlier, Naperville is like the size of a, a large business with a thousand employees and a hundred and fifty thousand stakeholders. And that career has given me the experience and leadership that would be a benefit to council. I'm not going to pretend to know the answer to everything, but I do my homework. I am a team player and I would work to find evidence-based solutions. And I will always listen to all sides. And I value good governance. Residents don't want extremism on the dais. And I know how to listen and I would respect my colleagues and residents and show up for them. I am literally running for Naperville. So remember Alison Longaba on the ballot and I'm on all social media, Alison for Naperville and uh public service announcements. Vote by mail ballots go out on the twenty-third and spring break ends on election day. So make sure to make your plans to vote early if you are going away.
Thank you. Our time is up for this forum. Your participation as a candidate and as a voter is essential to preserving the democracy we hold dear. For more information, please visit the Nonpartisan Voter Guide, votefouroneone.org. The candidates' websites, as well as the League of Women Voters of Naperville's website. Please remember to vote on or before April fourth, as one vote can decide the election and that one vote could be yours. Thank you.
Thank you.